Good evening, this is the November meeting of the Burlington Plan and Zone Commission. Appointed by five city residents, appointed by Burlington City Council, two extra councilorial members, appointed by the county commissioners. This board makes its recommendations to the Burlington City Council. Please silence your cell phone or any electronic devices if you have them, if you would please. Be advised, this meeting is being recorded. Testing, one, two. As appointed to order, if you're called on to make comments, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and address the chair. Public comments are limited to three minutes. If you would, staff, please conduct a roll call.
Chair Black?
Here.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick is currently absent. Member Beasley?
Present.
Member Parker?
Present.
Member Rome?
Here.
Member Gamble is absent, Member Hill is absent, and Member Wright is absent. Mr. Vice Chair Kirkpatrick just walked in.
Laura Montarini.
You're here. Okay. So we have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Does any commissioner have a conflict of interest on any items in the agenda?
No.
Okay. Then I'll ask for approval of the minutes of the Planning and Zone Commission meeting held on October 23rd.
Motion to approve.
Second motion, and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's go to item three, rezoning, 23015. Ms. Angie Ball to present a request to rezone property from high-density residential to general business, excuse me, limited use. The property is located northwest from the intersection of Durham Street and Riverview Drive, on the south side of Durham Street, addressed as 2416 Durham Street, and consistent in Alamance County Identification Number 127081. Ms. Ball, would you like to address?
Good evening. So...
And then the address.
Oh, Inchball, 107 Michael Drive, 861. So 2416 was purchased. Right now, the zoning on it is high-density for the neighborhood. With the location, there's really no use for this land as a residential property, so we would like to turn it into commercial property for a small mechanic shop, hopefully in the future.
Okay. Does any commissioner have any questions, or the commissioner?
Yes, Mrs. Parker. When you say a mechanic shop, you mean like...
Repair car shop.
Repairs for cars, okay. How many bays would there be, Angie?
Two.
Two bays, okay.
Across the street is Dane Miller, he owns four properties. I talked with him today, he has a small mechanic shop. He works on motorcycles there, he's been there for years.
And is that shown on this aerial?
Yes, so across, yes, right there. That's Dane's property, from there all the way to Riverview Corner and back. Basically, that whole chunk, corner chunk there, is his property. The property diagoned from Dane is Roger's property. He is totally fine with us being there.
That's the wrong, that you're pointing at is wrong.
That's our property.
That's our property. His name is also Roger. You're pointing at the wrong property. Sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to...
This is just south of it.
Yeah, the other property.
Yes.
Yes.
Go over to Melrose, across... Where you at?
There you go.
Go up a little bit, that corner house. No, it's Durham Street. Right there. Go over one, that's Bo's. He owns the two properties. Go down a little bit, there you go, yeah. He owns those two right there. He's aware of it, and they don't have any problems with it.
What would be the hours of operation, Angie?
Normally, it's like eight, nine in the morning till like five.
So typical...
Yeah.
Business hours.
Yes, now, this isn't a new business. This is an existing business that's currently off of Durham Street, that's been there since 2007, is when it was established.
Does any other commissioner have a question for the petitioner?
I do.
Yes, sir.
With it being a repair-type shop, Jamie, you may come in here. There's, I guess, some visual, if it's a repair shop, isn't there some sort of visual barrier of some sort that would need to be installed? For the, and have you fenced in, of course, because I guess cars would be there.
Right.
Right? Would you be opposed to possibly making a consideration, if this were approved, that you could offer some sort of visual barrier from the street to the neighbors?
Yes, I've already talked to Jamie a few times about the structure of the building, the visibility.
Right.
We will discuss that in a few meetings.
Okay, what would...
So just so the Planning and Zoning Commission and members of the public are clear, the request is for three different uses, not just auto repair and servicing. They have also included auto sales for rental, automobile towing, and storage lots. All of those uses are fall under the general business zoning, and if you were to just assume the general business buffer requirements up against the high-density residential, it would be a type C, which is a 30-foot buffer. There are use-specific standards for automobile repair and servicing, so any deviation from that would be what that use would have to follow. However, they would have to come in for a full-site plan, just like any other application with building elevations, site plan, parking areas, landscape, landscape plan.
So we get checks and balances in place for the buffer.
Right. And the existing vegetation, in some cases, may qualify for its existing buffers, but that has to be field verified, if there is any. Does that help answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Does any other commissioner have any questions for the petitioner? If not, I do. Ms. Bell, you said that you wanted to rezone because it wasn't applicable for the current zoning for high-density residential. Why not? Why couldn't you put high-density residential in there? It seems like everybody's looking for land for high-density residential. What makes this property not good for that?
When the land was purchased, it was under the facts that we were told it doesn't perk, so it wouldn't be considered for residential.
Is it part of the city sewage? That's what I'm asking.
It is outside of the, it is outside of the city limits, it's in the ETJ.
Right.
Right.
So...
No service is available?
Like a double check, but I think that's correct.
No, it's not available right now. If it was annexed in, it could be, I suppose.
I was just gonna see if there were lines running along that area as well.
Okay. No, you keep going.
So there is an existing water line that runs along Durham Street, so a request could be made to petition for utility connection for water, but sewer is further south and east.
Okay.
You mean like blocks away?
If you look at this map, it runs, the northernmost part in this area runs along Melrose Drive for sewer. Water runs all the way up, and then there's a sewer line that kind of cuts through this area in this direction, but there's not an immediate city-utility connection.
So if the subject property doesn't perk, how do these other houses dispose of their sewage?
The other houses in this area?
Nearby.
Well, some of these houses along here may be connected to...
I'm talking about adjoining the subject property.
Up in here?
Yeah.
I would imagine they are on septic.
We're right here.
I'm sure we'll, when we get to public comment, we'll be able to call them on you.
Okay, well, it just seems that if one house would perk, that the subject property would too.
Does any other commissioner have any more questions for the petitioner? Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
I'll open up the floor for comments from the public. Is there anybody who wishes to address?
Yeah.
Just can I state your name and address?
I hope my formality for this, but...
Your name and address is...
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Timmy Turlie, 2442 Durham Street Extension.
Okay.
Your name? Angie. Angie, I think what she said was that she was told it wouldn't perk. I don't know if that means it was tested or not, but I mean, how many feet do you say within their property are they on our well, honey?
Our wells. A yard away from their property line, in the corner between their yard and their wells.
We are not on city water. We have a well.
Do you have a septic tank?
Yes.
We do. And... There, I know that you guys cleared, Roger cleared a lot of the land for you, and there is a fence there. Like I said, I don't know to be formal here or not, but I will tell you that we looked at a house to buy before this house, when we were searching for a home, and we did not purchase it because it was beside a mechanic shop. And it was very, for lack of better words, it was an eyesore. I think that if we were to have ever tried to resell that home, it would have been really difficult, so the fence would definitely be, like you mentioned, would definitely be something that would be a huge deal for me, because I don't, most mechanic shops are not pretty to the eye. I don't want to look at that every day, and they took down any trees that would be between us and their property to block that view. We do, we are, we have become sort of close with Dane, the Millers. I know they have a business there, that's across the road, but looking out of our side of those of our house would be to their business. That would be a concern of mine, is how the property, I guess, would be maintained, and what we would be seeing. The other issue that, it's, the traffic there is heavy. I don't know, for people to be coming in and out of a business all the time, Dane and, or Dane and Matt have created a U-shaped driveway there, which would probably help with that. And there's been lots of accidents there, even more specifically recently. So the traffic in and out of a business right there, people, it is a 35 mile per hour zone, people rarely go that speed. It seems to me to be even more dangerous right where the business would want to be put. That's just a concern of me, someone living there.
Which one is yours again?
The one that, right there, yes.
That, all of that is your lot?
Yeah.
And whose lot is this below it?
Old Man Roger. That's their lot.
That's theirs, so we call, he's Roger, and Roger is the other guy, so we call him Old Man Roger, he probably...
Okay, so, Old Man Roger owns that lot?
Yes.
Okay. So you're up there, Old Man Roger's family.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if this is something, but you guys, we, we're hunters, we shoot guns on our property often. Is that something that would affect us being zoned that, or is it a business?
No.
No? Okay.
As long as you don't shoot them.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. But that is something that happens pretty frequently on our lot. Do you want to come up here?
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if I made any sense saying anything, this is just kind of my concerns.
I'll be glad to.
The immediate one was that we literally didn't want to buy a house because it was a mechanic shop beside it before, and so that's really sucks for us.
I've got a question for you.
Okay.
Is your house in front of downhill from...
That's what I was gonna get to, yes it is.
So there, uphill from you, so whatever perks through...
We have small garden.
...drain towards you, okay.
My name is Robert Turlie, 2442 Durham Street Extension, and my major concerns are how it affects the property value, being next to a mechanic shop, where they cross the street from Dane, and they do not work regular hours. They work pretty, they come in late, they leave, you know, fair time, five o'clock usually, but, so they haven't bothered us too much. But also with the, with the land being, going to be a mechanic repair shop and everything, we are downhill, as I want to say, and our well is right on that property line, right in the corner between Old Man Rogers and their property. So in any of our, I'll go straight into our well. And for me, not saying what the information they got was wrong, but it's hard to believe that land doesn't perk when our well is so close to theirs. It's within spitting distance. And the other thing is, that land that we're on now was once agricultural, had a couple acres of agricultural land, which helps open to making agricultural land again. We've already started with some chickens, I want to get a forest on there, and potentially a couple cattle, because our long-term goal is to buy some land and raise an eggs farm. But, so, we want to keep that as a farm property, a home for our daughter, and do what's best and safe for her. So those are my big concerns about that, property values burn off, well contamination, noise, pollution, all that.
Does any commissioner have any questions, Mr. Parker? Thank you, sir.
John, can I speak?
Please.
Um, I can see where they're coming from, but if they didn't want to buy the last house next to a garage, then why did they buy it directly across from a motorcycle shop at that? That's been there for years. And having horses and a farm or anything like that shouldn't have anything to do with a mechanic shop being right there. The old man Roger that they're talking about is my father. We actually own all that property all the way to my apartment way to Durham Street. We originally owned that house, and rented it out, and put it on the market a few years ago, but all went through.
You own the lower section, I mean this lower section also?
Yes, sir. The house at the endpoints, my dad, I grew up there. I was raised in that house since I was a year old. The lot from the left side of that property, from my parents' house, the back end of it is owned by me. I purchased that property a few years ago. So with me being there my whole life, and finally getting my hands on this property from Bridget Jones, act of Congress after 20 years of trying to purchase that land, now that they're getting older, his wife decided to sell it, and we have always known since I have been little, because my dad has actually leased that property for years, that that lot never perked. And we've known that for a long time. The trees that are there in, what's your name? Sorry.
Roger Tiffany.
Roger and Tiffany.
Tiffany, okay. On their property at the very end is a wooded lot. The land has been cleared, the majority of it, of the trees and stuff like that, preparing the land to hopefully build something on it. The well does go downhill, I mean, well, the land does go downhill slightly towards that well, but with that property, the building is further up. The blue line closer to the corner block, the corner of Riverview and Durham Street is, that's where the driveway for that property is, is next to the other corner house near Melrose and Riverview, right there. So I don't see any concern of any extra traffic going back and forth to cause any more traffic than what's there typically on a normal day, so I don't see how traffic would affect them. The fence will be up there, which we've already discussed with Jamie, which would have to be a wooden fence that we've already discussed. So I don't understand what a wooden fence typically from a resident to resident, or resident and commercial land would be. It might be a foot taller than normal, because it has to be, what, five, six foot tall? And with noise and stuff from a mechanic shop, from being far away from where her house is, to where the building would be on that lot, would probably be a lot more quieter than a motorcycle shop, because Dane's been there my whole life growing up, and it's a lot more noisier than a small garage with two bays would be. So if you all have any questions, go Parker.
Mr. Parker, I'm still baffled by this sewage issue. Will the shop have a bathroom?
We will have to get a septic put in, yes.
Well, if the land doesn't perk, how are you gonna use a septic tank? Will you tell me?
I don't know. We ain't got that far yet. I was told that we needed to get it...
Zoned?
Yep.
Do you have a question?
Thank you, Ms. Ball.
Thank you, babe.
Yes, sir.
Are we, does your daddy's land have a well?
No, they're on city water.
So that property is on city water?
Which one?
Your father's property.
Yes, city water.
Okay, thank you. All right. If there's no other comments from the public, does any commissioner have anything they would like to ask or discuss about this? Any comments?
Water would take to extend water to sewage.
Well, water runs right down the road.
Water's running, water's running right down Durham Street.
Yeah, sewer runs on Melrose. Does it run all the way out to the Blue Line?
No, no, it runs...
Does it run out to Riverview?
It does not run out all the way out to Riverview. It runs currently to about here.
Where, where, how much is it?
Uh, where, where, Melrose.
The Amo, move it back, of course.
Yeah, the Amo, Melrose.
And then it's down in this area, so this is as far north roughly as it exists.
At this point?
Mm-hmm.
I have another question for y'all. Who said the city water runs where?
City water currently runs up and down Durham Street. It goes down Riverview, goes down Melrose, it's all in this area currently.
And obviously, it goes to that property, because...
It goes up Riverview as well. Just because the lines exist does not necessarily mean that somebody's tapped into it, but the lines do run in this area.
Any way, if I may, give me a projection of how that would affect my property value in the mechanic shop next to it?
That's not good at our purging.
I was just curious.
All right. Any other comments from the commission? Lee, I believe you touched on something as far as the well. My history in insurance, and of course, homeowners, and Richard, I know that you probably are aware of this, James probably in construction, contamination of a well is a very serious problem, and it's one, Angie, that you should be aware of, because if this shop were to contaminate their well, repercussions are really bad. I'll just point that out. The other thing, I have seen car lots with storage, sometimes they utilize a watchdog or something of that effect. Once again, there's a liability concern about the use of an animal in a situation like this. Hours of operation with something like this, it's not like we can impose a, they must be shut down by six o'clock, because sometimes mechanics work when they can. And if that means they're out there at 8:30 at night on a Saturday evening, or Sunday afternoon, or Sunday morning comes, and they've got an opportunity to work on a car, sometimes they'll take advantage of those times. We have no way of restraining that. Floodlights for protection as far as theft or anything will have to fit code and not bleed over to the other people's lives. I don't know if all of this has been thought about or not. I just, I bring this up because I think it's important that everybody be aware of certain situations. Okay. Have you received any letters, any calls, any comments on this?
Not besides the folks that are in the audience tonight.
Okay. So if there are no other comments or questions, I'll ask for the staff's recommendation.
So, staff did take a look at this area very closely, and as you may have read in the staff report, this area is considered to be suburban residential. However, we did note that there are many other non-residential uses along Durham Street and within the area, there's existing general business zoning districts. So it's a mix of uses that currently exist with a mix of different zoning districts. While we did not feel that this site really was consistent with the future land use designation of suburban residential, as it did not seem to be in character with failing a gap of creating an existing residential pattern, you don't have large-scale residential development in this area. development in this area of new neighborhoods, and probably for the reasons of the infrastructure. So with, with all of that in mind, we did make a recommendation for the rezoning request as with any other change of zoning and any other commercial development. The property would be subject to, if they move forward, would be subject to all of our unified development ordinance standards, including design standards for commercial buildings, the buffer requirements, the lighting limitations, and all of those considerations would be part of an overall site plan, full-blown site plan application, that would only be able to be approved by a building permit if they were successful in going through the TRC site plan process. So this is one of the areas where we felt like the existing land use pattern did not necessarily reckon, reckon, was consistent with the future land use designation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have pertaining to this, but we
So you, are you recommending approval?
We are, we are recommending approval, but not consistent with the future land use designation.
So that'd be number two?
Yes.
You said they have to have a thirty-foot barrier?
It's a.
Thirty-foot.
Thirty-foot perimeter buffer from general business to general business. However, the auto-related uses have their own standards too, so if those standards are somewhat deviating from it, those would apply.
They would.
Mm-hmm. Now, the applicant could go above and beyond, you know, what the ordinance requires, that's always an option too. But at this point, we don't have any site plan, we don't have any plans to, to tie a rezoning to.
That being said, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Parker?
To recommend approval of the request to rezon the property from high density residential to general business, limited use, GB dash O U, property is located northwest from the intersection of Durham Street and River View Drive, on the south side of Durham Street, address is twenty-four sixteen Durham Street, consisting of Allen County Tax Identification Number One Two Seven Zero Eight One. While the request is inconsistent with the future land use, land use map in Section Four Land Use Conference and Plan, in that it calls for this area to have suburban residential uses, the request is compatible with the existing commercial uses and zoning in the area, request is compatible with existing general business district zoning in the area, large-scale commercial and manufacturing operations, auto-related uses, and a small-scale retail convenience store, the action is reasonable and in the public interest, in that the conference of plan encourages a sustainable balance of land uses, the request is compatible with the existing zoning and land uses in the area. The property's location, size and configuration, as well as the existing non-residential land use pattern, make it suitable for commercial use.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna do what?
Roll call, please.
Chair Black.
Nay.
Vice Chair Patrick?
Approved.
Member Beasley?
Approved.
Uh, Member Parker?
Nay.
Okay. Member Brown?
Oppose.
And, um, Member Rager?
Denied.
Okay, so this will move forward without planning and zoning commission recommendation?
That is correct. You will be, you'll receive, Angie, you'll receive a letter as to when the council will act on this recommendation, or, and you'll go forward from there. Very good. Anything else to come before this commission? If not, I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving, and I wish each and every one of you a very, very Merry Christmas. Guests will be notified if and when, and there is a luncheon break?
Yeah, the Christmas party that we had for you guys last year, we're doing it again, so if you're able to attend, it's going to be, I believe, um, can't remember if it was it December, December sixth in the evening? So you should have all gotten that in your emails. If you didn't, let me know, and I'll send you that details. Families welcome, it's just a night to hang out and enjoy, as we chose coming.
Thank you very much. Enjoyed seeing y'all in the parade. That was, that was quite exciting. And once again, Charles, congratulations on a well-run race. I'm sorry it didn't turn out.
You didn't enjoy seeing us in the parade?
None.
Anyway, you did us proud and.
I wasn't.
Better luck next time. Nothing else? We are adjourned.